Falls City Council Meeting Work Session of six seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
Six thirty we call special city council meeting, work session meeting of June, two thousand seventeen order. We do have a call, public call, individuals may address the city council about items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council records and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that follow from the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time. So may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to be placed on upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak? And you're on the regular agenda mic, so. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion of bills made by. Any questions? Any questions on the consent agenda? Right. No questions on the consent. We had a couple additions for a temporary halt on sale for the dam fest. And the dam to dam bike parade permit, or bike run, or what they're gonna call it. So those two will be added to the consent. Any questions or concerns on those? Council information items, land discussion? You're so excited, you forgot we're here!
So, I'm here to share some information with you. This is a site plan from the Friday to Sunday camp. But, uh, where's here? This is the bridge, going east. And, uh, this is moved to draw that by my city engineer. And took me a go, and I understand, and then I see her, hopefully. And, uh, I'm sure about this, I'm in sight plan, and it's perfectly, a three-story building. And right now it's all in a B two zoning, which may change depending on how I understood, but, uh... So, my plan is to build this building. Problem is, I don't own a lot of land. I've got about twenty-one thousand feet that would take us to a lot of land all in here. And this surplus land, which would be dissolved after this road is put in, all on city property. And there'd be about fourteen thousand feet left of site. And so a combination of, uh, I got twenty-two thousand feet above, the city's got about fourteen thousand. And then this alley, which I was vacated a few years ago, still in use, but it's vacated. Half a lot come toward myself. And vacation, and I'd like to purchase the half that goes to the city as well, the balance of the land. So my goal would be to buy that surplus land after this road, or even before the road was installed. And, uh, put it back up. I think it's all B two, conforms, I think, pretty much every aspect, it could be a possible pain restriction. Right now, I think the one I've got planned is about forty feet high, which I love. I forget, but forty and forty-five is pretty close. But other than that, it conforms to all aspects, so. That's my goal. And, uh, I'm gonna keep moving. And over the protocol, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to the city folks and see what my next step would be. But I want you guys to be involved, formed, uh, when I like to get that. My plan is, well, starting nineteen ninety-nine, this has been going on for seventeen years. I acquired five houses, failed twice to get this done. And, uh, hopefully this time I hope it'll get done. But, uh, that's my story, so if there's any questions, I'd like to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Olsman?
I have some thoughts to interject. I've been here a while, remember your last plan? Which I was in favor with you. The council voted it down because they wanted that area kept for a park. So, uh, you had a really good option for us back then, we were actually getting a little money towards that road then.
And probably another one.
And, uh, did very good change in everything, and to me, so I'd like to really deal that now. I have a type of professional bill, just, uh...
Yes, the journey.
So, uh, I have to get used to that idea. The, uh, park complex in there, especially the, uh, we have a little park just in the north. Guess that's something we'll have to discuss as a council, but, uh, just to give some more background. I, I know the territory of the road now, so we're gonna have to deal with it anyway. It's not really a hard part.
I think this is broad, it's way too big.
Yeah. So, that's pretty much where it was last night, what you presented last night. We got a proposal, uh, to put the improvement into the road and change that part, because right now it's too sharp.
Right, yeah, it used to be like this.
Yeah.
And I keep in mind too, that was an old council that voted down, so if we wanna get the land back on the tax roll. One development.
Now we have empty buildings downtown, wouldn't we rather have, uh, places for people to live, or... And then, uh, put a professional building in, and then take, close more buildings downtown, so. You know, that'd be a lot of discussion, and, uh, back and forth, which way's best.
And I'm gonna comment that that professionally, you know, that drive, it's like, if you feel, if you just feel. I advertise here, say, oh, Raynard, we truly, there's just zero marketing, it just didn't exist.
For a business.
Yeah, it's just, it's not there. So, prior to that, I had another one, Rich Carlson, in fact, Pat Spencer's the parent. But, the, uh, who was that, the twenty-four year old tenant, and, yeah. I, I, I know this, I know the city could use more houses, one, they'll just build their phone, you know, there's people like that, so. That, that, for your concern, this versus commercial.
It's just the main thing, uh, although we're in commercial buildings, I think you're going.
One story.
One story.
But nineteen feet.
That's a choice of as far as visually looking across there, that, and that for the matters.
Well, this building, I hear that, that Riverwood, probably building that, that's still fifteen feet higher than this one.
Yeah, yeah, this sets down a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit, there's no reflection, there's no many roads, there's a lot of.
Yeah, you can't see it from twenty-seven, so.
Have you guys started construction on that? What's all the grading that's going on down there?
That's our stuff, with our street project, uh, we wanted to do that, we wanted to raise that road, and bring that more to the thirty mile an hour, uh, current, you know. So Trump out in twenty-seven, coming through in twenty nineteen, I see this as, you know, a problem to get the whole crowd and still get a full. And so we're trying to prepare a little bit more for that, get that road kind of prepped where it should be to get the thirty mile an hour. Because right now, you can't really get a lot of, uh, working vehicles through there. And so, part of our street project, we were intending to bring that grid up and get the preparation for that. And then, later on, my team came over and said, oh, what are you guys looking at in terms of the rest of that land? And that's where he started, uh, looking at just doing something with that property.
Would it be a good idea to have a lot of construction going on there, if we're using it as a detour when twenty-seven is?
Well, twenty-seven would be considered until my day. So, we've got.
And this would be completed by then?
Exactly, yes.
That's an hourly charge. Took seventeen years to get to this point.
Just a two in a bunch, I think, and we're gonna raise that grade, something for everyone now. Words, whatever the goal means, I think, uh, it's important. The other thing is, from like I can understand, when, uh, taxes go from fifty hundred bucks to below twenty thousand. It's getting fifty, uh, or here, twenty thousand bucks, I'll say tax, it's a pain. And it's, you know, considering these pants bills, and this is the source of this, how things work.
Like for last time, we went through this, it's, we have enough parks that are under development right now, we're trying to figure out ways to make it improve them. Yet that one would almost be impossible.
We got two on the, one on each side of twenty-seven, right, across the alley, so.
You have a lot of parks.
Yep, yeah, we can sell a deal of them too, if you're looking for more. You want, no park? Okay. So, if the city isn't in favor of selling that, are you still gonna put apartments down there? And scale it back, is that your intention, or your?
I got eighteen units, I'd like to get two more, anyway. At that, you have an elevator, two-story building, that's about eighteen thousand bucks. Now, if I say, okay, I can't do it, I can come over here, but I can do nine, of my own building. But then you have an Amos, there's, free, I'm fine looking, three-story skinny building, elevator, you know. So, I, I, I probably, I know, I can't answer that question, I guess I don't know.
I just care if it's a go either way, or if it's gonna be a half project, or if it's gonna be either a project or no project.
If you guys said no, I have to go back.
Back to the drawing board, let's, hold it.
That's so godly, you can say, yeah.
Well, like Karen says, it's a whole new council, and the way this council looks at it might be different, never know.
I will say that again, the, these things are filled up right now, this alley, uh, with people, uh, special.
Do you, do you have a plan for what the range of rent would be?
Yeah, the twelve to fourteen hundred a month. And make a nice three-bedroom, two-three bedroom, sell two-bedroom down. If you sell it, you cross it, and people will do that to the river, uh, that we, uh, that we did. And it's full, and it's just, it's just a nice mix of... Not a family, but we have a order supply of something that's housing right now, in my opinion, there's plenty of their own there. And when there's not, you know, my, there's a market right now for people, they do have assets, and they do have good jobs, and they, yeah, they're, and there's, and there's probably.
Well, there's been, I brought this up once before, I think it was on Saint Joseph, uh, where they did a study in how many people want to live actually in town, downtown, with easy access to everything, and that would fit that perfect.
Conventional?
Yeah, yep.
You know, the demographics of Morrison County is, uh, is, well, that's the, for the seniors, I mean. We're getting older faster in Morrison County. There's not a lot of young guys making a hundred and fifty grand a year in the tech industry, in those malls. Different market.
Well, I think our housing set is short, and we need housing, so.
Any other questions? Thank you much.
Did you bring your checkbook today? By the land?
Well, when I say it's supply or require. Well, thanks for taking good.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Ordnance number ninety-six, six series, update chapter eleven.
Yeah, uh, as you recall at your last, uh, work session, we discussed the, the changes to chapter eleven that was made. Uh, tonight, basically, we're going to present this in front of the council here, before we start moving forward with, uh, with some of those changes. Uh, a couple of notes, and I don't mind letting you roll, last night. Uh, eleven point oh six, which deals with construction deliveries, and I know you mentioned this before. Uh, that's gonna stay in place in our current code, uh, until we get that, uh, that clarified, so that's gonna stay the way it is currently. Uh, and then eleven point oh nine, uh, this is for no use, we will keep that language in there as well, until we update chapter six. We're looking at updating that, and probably more progress will work to go. Uh, so, if we get chapter six updated soon enough, we'll change the language, which are all the files currently, uh, in your bag. But right now, it looks like six might not get done, so we're leaving the way that we have it, uh...
Well, that gets all the questions and comments about chapter eleven, the way that we have it written. Is there any comments, questions about, uh, the, 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 uh, looking at chapter eleven?
I have one, and I have it highlighted, but I don't remember what page it was on. Eleven point what it was, containing to better brushes of food ordinances, or with additional food services. It allows food, additional food, uh, tea parties, meals by appointment only, to be served from eight AM to four PM. And I'd like to see that changed from eight AM to eight PM, add additional four hours, so you can do something in the evening. They did that because of the parking restrictions, but the parking restrictions have been removed since then, so there's not really any reason why that needs to stay four o'clock. It said eight AM to, or eight AM to four PM, and I think it should be eight AM to eight PM, it said four PM.
So, maybe forty-one, uh, package is one six. Under L four, hours per ninety, but five minutes, one minute, eight o'clock, AM, four five.
And that was when we needed off-street parking, but then they changed it that they could park on the street. So, there's no, really, no reason why it would have to be restricted. And, and they said it was gonna be during non, it was gonna be during hours when you're not operational, so checkouts at eleven and check-ins at four. And so, but, that only applied to the afternoon, but not the morning, so I don't know why it wasn't eleven to four, it was eight to four. So it didn't really make a lot of sense.
You have a parking, yeah, you have a parking spot that you can future to use as a left corner, look at.
Right.
Hey, there, when we discussed all of this, I don't see why our rationale would be where you could extend it up to eight o'clock, because the courthouse and everything, it's business hours, or face that, that screen opens up quite a bit.
Don't matter, we shouldn't be writing an ordinance for one place anyhow, it's a citywide ordinance, so.
Right.
Where it's located, it should have nothing to do with it.
Right, okay, so it's, uh, four, uh, K four. And then it was a Netherlands, but I just didn't understand what it meant, and I just wanted some verification, that one is really close.
So, the plan for chapter eleven is that our July third meeting, potentially have our first reading, and then our July seventh, yeah, seventeenth, we'll have, uh, the vote on, uh, chapter eleven. In between there, uh, twelve, eleven, we have a policy, we're going from three business districts down to two districts, from two industrial, we have one, we have one industrial. And so, we would be changing some of the zoning classifications of some of the, uh, properties as well. Coincide with this, this, uh, chapter eleven update, so then that would also underlie a, 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 uh, seven.
Anybody else reading, finding anything, any questions on?
Well, where were you going with the ordinance for one? Should we jump a lot of this to begin with? I mean, I look at it as, I don't know what you have for licensing for food, whatever, but why are we restricting hours, like, at all?
That was a whole deal for bed breakfast, because we had one that they were gonna permit. And for the business to overlap, so you write it into the ordinance for one, one deal, we shouldn't be writing it for for our bed breakfast, no matter where they're located in town, if you're located next to the courthouse, it shouldn't have anything to do with the hours at the courthouse, parking on the street.
Well, you're right.
I don't disagree with it.
Hey, what's happening, that's.
It shouldn't be restricted at all, it's, or, it shouldn't be restricted at all.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying, why are we saying you can't have people in your facility for a tea, meal, or, or?
Well, that's what Karen was saying, that one time, they're worried about parking down on the street. Yeah, but the way the thing was written up, they could park down the street during the busiest times of the day, white limited. Then four extra hours, when all the traffic's gone anyway, you know, so.
I, I think we consider traffic to many aspects, I mean, if you.
Yeah, it gets a little crazy.
I travel all over the country, we don't have a traffic problem.
Yeah, yeah, they actually changed, they did that because of the parking.
It was a parking issue.
But then they changed the parking ordinance, so that B and B guests could, but didn't have to park on the street. You still have to have off-street parking if they want it, but they can now park down the street without, you know, getting ticketed, or whatever.
Okay, well, what the answer is, what I thought it was, it's a agreement, I'm like.
So, maybe just you can eliminate that clause.
I have a question, beyond that, it's in the beginning of this, um, uh, uh... It's a big document. There might have been some discussion at some point that, that I've, I've never heard, but the issue has come up a few times, and that's accessory structures without a primary dwelling. And my question is, what are, what are we trying to avoid here? Why can't somebody buy a lot, build a garage first?
The whole purpose, we're trying to get houses, uh, in the block, that's all that we need, that's the city code. Uh, we do allow now the addition of a small garage, a hundred and forty sparky, uh, so we're trying to put a lot more, something of that to maintain. But currently, at the city code, it's, you can't have an accessory structure without.
Well, that's, that's not an uncommon practice, uh, other, many cities have it too, I, city residents did as well, so. It's, it really is making sure that residential properties have residential structures on them. If it's just a garage, I mean, that, you know, turn that into your own personal storage, storage lot, for, or, you know, other things, or other purposes, or maybe even doing commercial things without having a residential lot. Its own residential, uh, intent for that land should be to have a residential house, or place them, a place for the, the things that they're selling. They're doing, I know, projects, whether it's paving or utilities, you know, you're assessing both properties, one of them. When you have a house there, it's much easier to show the benefit of the ground.
So there's not anything that says you can build a garage, but within a year you have to build a house, or something like that?
You can't pull a permit for both at the same time, build one, correct? You pull a permit for a house, and you can get an extension or whatever, if they were gonna plan on doing that, build a garage and then build a house.
Possibly, I guess I.
Pull permits.
I don't think we've run across that yet, but, but. I just, this popped into my brain, when Earl wanted to split up his lots, and... I think his goal was, where they have the time, but, sorry, you can't do it.
There is a whole, uh, maybe a property on the website, that somehow they slipped a garage in, the whole primary structure.
There's a couple of our own account, uh, what happened was, they had separate parceling numbers, at the time, even though the same person owned both of them, they put a garage on a house, or on a property that had separate parceling numbers. And then, at some point, they probably sold it to someone else, and that was such a separate parcel, you can't. And so that, that's all several of us, uh, that cracked. If we don't have technology, if they did have technology, then that would be down, if you look up, see from the orders, what the property line, that's what they just done.
Any other questions? Did they answer your question, or in a roundabout way?
It is what it is, I'm sure, you know, other, other people do it, so it must be a good idea. It's not a big point of contention, or maybe just a curiosity.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Public Works Capital Revival Plan.
I brought you on, one name, seven of your packages. I've got a draft capital revival plan that I was looking at, uh, in terms of, I wanted to kind of get this out, so that the council and the government can have more awareness where we're looking at, united projects, hence, I'll let you guide me by every means, uh, because it can and probably will change in terms of what areas we're looking at. When I look at our, our street projects, the first thing I'm gonna look at, and I've drawn a different map, is the road condition, how, what, what shapes they are, are the most good. After that, I start looking at where the store is the oldest in town, and where we're having most issues, with the sanitary store. From those two, I'll pull together which project areas are most important, that are not the district department, that have issues, to come up with our twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, uh, projects. So, this is kind of looking forward at those, at those areas, obviously, they're all in need of, of work, uh, but they could be jostled around, or in some, certain areas there. Depending on what we see over time, and how they, uh, in the study reports. Uh, one of the things that kind of prompted me, and why I couldn't, is for number two, one of the things that prompted me with the seven street projects, where, you know, they did tell about the project coming forward. So I, I wanna get people to much notice that, hey, we're looking at something in this area, uh, so that they're, they've gotta head up, kind of budget for it to go, uh, so, so I'm actually, not a surprise. One thing I will be looking at doing here in the near future, probably the next, I'd say, one or two. I'm looking at, trying to, trying to solve, uh, uh, how to, how to, the council merchants, the payment management, so I can't forget which areas are going, which areas of payment are going to fail. Usually, when you look at assets, the worst condition gets done first. But, that may not necessarily be a hundred percent true all the time, because if you're looking at, you have areas that have higher traffic, you might wanna keep them in better shape, because more people are impacted by those, those areas. So, I'm gonna try to come up with a, a formula or a solution to, to look at, where we wanna put our money in terms of payment, because the twenty a dollar to preserve the payment today equals eighty seven dollars for reconstruction in the future. So, a lot of reserve, the payment that's given to the house as much as we can. Unfortunately, that's gonna mean that some of the payments that don't get utilized, they'll get alligator tracking, they'll, they'll deteriorate. But again, you're benefiting more people with the higher end of your youth roads, uh, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to pull away from. We're not gonna, we just can't afford to have everything in great shape, uh, look for the, do the best that we can to clarify our type of property.
Questions on the plan? Nothing? Okay, other?
Um, I did have, uh, communication with all Derek Chollers over since our last meeting, uh, discussing issues with contract. We came to the proposal that we would separate out the Riverview area, uh, with thirty-five, uh, thirty-five residents into, uh, of trumpet disposal territory from above the areas, uh, which is probably, um, basically swap those thirty-five, bring the areas down to about four fifty-eight, uh, for the active month of May. And, uh, as part of the discussion. And, uh, as part of the discussion, um, two hollers were really pushing for a ten-year contract, and the third problem here wants, does not want a ten-year contract. And in my conversation today, that's a very, um, steep point with them, that if the contract is longer than five years, they, um, you know, if you wanna push for it, uh.
So they just want out of that, and split between the other two? Instead of taking a five-year or a ten-year? They'd rather have nothing than ten?
Or they wanna see where the council went?
I'm gonna take five years as a good contract just to be upfront, because this is the way the city, however, we think to operate, if you put a ten-year contract in there.
I don't know. When we sat here five months ago, we gave them direction to get three, get a ten-year contract and, and get it done. And here it's six months later, and now we're fighting to go backwards. Took us almost two years to wrap this thing up. So we're gonna start at three years on the next five-year contract? So we're done to continue?
Well, and to some people, maybe splitting, they thought through, split it three ways. Maybe they thought evenly, you know, there's people that think that they own our residence, and it's not necessarily so. Did they buy the residence, or did they buy the route? Um, so there's a lot of, don't make it sound like they're just one person, uh, that's taking their stick and going home. We've got three people taking their stick and going home. Because if it would have been, uh, you know, one promise, okay, you give up this many, we'll give up this many, I don't know if that was done. And it didn't still end to affect their total, but when we started an agreement, you know, we said if it wasn't figured out by tonight, let's go to reorganization. We didn't say that it could be on a two in favor, one against, and that's good enough. We said they had to have agreement. We tried to work agreement. That doesn't seem to work out, and one side can hold out to try to get more, and the other side can hold out because they're not happy, and then they could all end up with nothing through reorganization. Just.
I'm not in favor of a ten-year contract either, that's way too long. I mean, that's ridiculous. No one gets a ten-year contract on anything.
I don't want to know what. We get ten-year contracts out of Camperley all the time, so.
Yeah, it's like you said earlier, councilship, four years from now, three, well, a little over three, could be a total different con, you know, council, if we're gonna look at things, at least this gives them they're not locked in for another five, six years there.
I think ten years is a long time to give somebody a contract. I, I really do. I, very seldom you see many people give anybody a ten-year contract. A lot don't even give them five. Might take us ten years to get this one done?
Yeah. Well, I, I have written down from last time, and I can't remember who's who. I know four eighty-five is four meters, and I can't remember who was eleven fifty and eleven twenty-five.
Yeah, with the, when we got to the, uh, the active numbers and where we, where I thought we were when we left the meeting, I was gonna have, Old Trampa was gonna be at eleven eighty-seven, and, um, Burger, or City Sanitarium was gonna be at eleven sixty-five or something like that. Then they agreed that there's a portion of that territory that, um, we had, I had carved out to get twenty, to get those numbers to be equal, because one of the goals I, I, I interpreted from the discussion was to, to split the two and leave Lemire with the four eighty-five, you know, the Riverview, Riverwood area. So that's, that was an attempt to get those numbers balanced. They, they agreed that they could leave that to, that, take that twenty-four out and give it back to, uh, City Sanitarium. So the difference now is that, uh, city would be at twelve oh one, and, uh, Old Trampa would be at like eleven sixty.
So we want a ten-year contract, that's why they'd be locked in for ten years then?
And those numbers fluctuate every, you know, every given month, depending on how many accounts are active and not active. Um, there's also new construction that goes into that, so there's parts of the town where the new residential home, so less than two units is, is built, then, um, those are added to the account. Uh, so part of the territory for Old Trampa is, um, east of, all of east of, um, Walmart City is picking up five from, from that piece, and it's also picking up the split was Highway twenty-seven, so there was the confusing part of where twenty-seven jogs, and you have, uh, First Avenue Northeast properties that are south of actually, high, south of Highway twenty-seven. So there's confusion there who, who it is, so we made Broadway the split instead. Um, so that actually got, uh, Old Trampa twenty-four, twenty-five more properties there too, so there was, there was about thirty that went one way, and now we give back twenty-four and wanted that gift. Um, basically, and adjusted to try to make the numbers balance.
Well, numbers balance is approximately nine hundred and forty for each holler. That's numbers balance.
Yeah, that would be even and fair.
Chalmers Riverwood?
Riverwood is about two hundred and, two hundred and twenty-four.
No, it's gotta be more than that in Riverwood, four hundred something.
Oh, fine, sorry, four hundred and twenty-four.
So, can I ask, what guy, what's changed since when we sat down at the table in February, when you guys came in, you wanted Riverwood, and that ten-year contract was no deal, you'd sign that day, and everything would've been done?
Well, I, um, there's some stuff they changed in the contract.
Well, we gave, we raised a dollar amount that we can give, you get the same, you got better customers now because you got half Riverview and Riverwood. And now you want a five-year deal instead of a ten-year, so we give you more for longer, and now you wanna go back?
They wanna put it where you can't go out in your area.
There's several, there's several things that have changed here, and, and we've been told every time I say something, somebody else told me that my face, this was a negotiation. At one point, we had some fees, which was five hundred eighty-five customers, and Greg was at nine hundred, and Loubers was at thirteen hundred, and I sat right there and said, how is that fair to Burger to have so few? And it's all changed, and it's gone on and on, and it's not that we don't want a ten-year, I just think wrong, it's just, we're all looking at ten years wrong. If we have to take ten years, we still care. I think five is much fairer. Little contract in Camperley in two years, and then an additional three a year in five. Camperley is bigger than the city of Oklahoma. And I, I just, we had said it to John today, back the way it was. Greg came to our shops and we give, we give Loubers thirty-five, so then he'll sign this thing, whatever, and then Burger's gonna give thirty, so we gave thirty-five, we're gonna take it in. And we don't have Burger to start off with. It's like, give me Riverwood, we're gonna give you back, I don't care how long you do your contract, I don't care.
Well, where does this other stuff be common in the contract?
It's, it's, it was all signed, you can't go into other people's areas and pick up thirty to someone's home, and they're not happy with their haul, and they're still paying the city.
That's, that, that wasn't what, that's not what it's, that's specifically meant. I, I was going, using an attorney's letter, uh, from, uh, from Old Trampa and the city that they provided for. The attorney made a comment, and I thought it was a fair one, um, to defend against, like, poaching of customers, like, they, they're picking up their route without their note, without them notifying. I failed to, to, like, consider that if one of the hollers is contracted by, once, you know, a city resident like today wants a contract with separate hollers to provide their service, that, I didn't, that didn't fall that into consideration. That should be, and that should be amended. There should be some clause in there to allow for that to, to take place if residents don't wish to do that, but I don't know.
They're gonna pay their own way, like they're doing now currently when you have beds, let them, who cares where they go?
Yeah, that was, that was the, that was the intent. I don't, it wasn't the intent that they can't possibly work in the other area if they're not contracted.
Old Trampa, Burger, in favor of a five-year contract?
They wanted, they're pushing for, for a ten. They both agreed to push for a ten because they're making some significant investments into the change in the collection system to, to meet it in the most cost-effective manner of the price that we agreed to. So, um, with a ten-year contract that gives them the, I guess, encouragement that they can go out and make those capital investments.
Well, that's part of the whole negotiation on the pricing was a ten-year contract. When we sat down at the table, to come up with the pricing that they had, was for a ten-year deal. So they could go out and spend the capital improvement to buy vehicles, and have guaranteed income.
Wasn't here for that, and then get that, realize that that was already?
Well, that was at, at the negotiation meetings.
Part of the discussion. We gotta get over this so many times, I can't.
I was thinking the same thing. Greg just said over there, we've been doing this, we said tonight, is that let's come up with what we expect, either they go with it or don't, and then we have to deal with.
So did you get contracts through you guys?
Contracts and contracts.
Two contracts that are signed, and they've confirmed agreements from two of the hollers did. They're, they're signing draft contracts, it's, I think that's a.
Well, that was the deal, but Greg said. If that's not, if we don't have a contract, then we're moving on.
And I, I spoke with Burger's also, and, uh, you know what I told them is we have to try to come up with something that the council's gonna vote in, ratify, no matter what we put out there. Um, if the council doesn't vote in favor of it, then we have to do a different contract, because it's, it's not just ratified by signature, correct? False resign them, and we vote no. Um, so.
Council's gonna have to prove it too.
Right, so I said, we're trying to figure something out where we can be fair, and where we get the majority to vote, and that's all I've been saying the entire time. Not trying to pick teams here, I'm trying to pick a solution. Um, and so I've gone back and forth and talked with the entities and said, how about this, and how about this, and they've asked to come see me, and they come in and see me, and, uh, it just, there's always this little bit, well, how about this, or how about this? So I'm, it's taken way too long. We look like, we don't look like the brightest group because we're still working on this year later.
And that's just how many of our residents are expecting cans in July?
Oh, I'm getting asked all the time.
Where's our cans? When's our cans coming?
You should work in a store where we sell the bags.
Last time we got here, right, I, I have it written down from the last, four eighty-five, eleven fifty, and eleven twenty-five, right? And we said, get it done, right? And now they changed again. I, I, I can't see why you guys aren't agreeable to somebody having four eighty-five when you're both having over eleven hundred apiece.
That's a question.
Well, yeah, yeah. Well, what's unacceptable about four eighty-five, when you each have over eleven hundred?
What's unacceptable is you're taking one fourth of my business.
When I bought that contract is over, and I bought that business, I have fifteen hundred customers, okay? I'm making payments on it, all right? Still making payments on it. If I can wanna take them, give them away, okay? That's fine. We agreed to that. When we said we wanted the ten-year, and we wanted the, the pricing, and the quarter, and all that, and everything, now I want, I want more. I'm not giving anymore. The contract goes, is over, correct? Right, the previous contract was over. It's like, you bought a business, that was under a contract, that term is now over. I, I just don't get it, the numbers here. I, I, I think the Lemires are being more than fair. They lost business under the annexation. And they're not, they're not even asking for a third of the cut here.
Greg, do you have some?
When this all started, we were asked for a few things in that first meeting. We were told the city wanted cards, the city wanted a third holder, and that third holder was gonna be around one hundred dollars. And actually, at that first meeting, that third holder stated, all I want is Riverwood, I'll be happy with that. We can win it out of seven, which is about four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Well, through some circumstances happened, there was a question asked that I'm responsible for. I'm supposed to tell people on cards, but he was asked the question, if you would be happy with Riverwood accurately. But this guy had no knowledge of that. So we came to an agreement the day after, May fifteenth, that he, did Riverwood have half, or what they're putting it on? Now we spotted it again. At that May fifteenth, we, we were so close to an agreement, I don't know how many times, and every time we got that close, they changed their minds. They demanded something else. It should've been done now, it should've been done months ago. I'm not wanting anything, whatever, just to wait for process man. It was what we agreed on, the day after that, May fifteenth, we, we and him will have pretty closely the same number of dollars. He's gonna have four sixty-three. That's more than we originally asked for, which was on Riverwood, which was four twenty-eight. So, if he's still in the nineties, he's gonna end up with more than what he originally wanted. And I can't figure out why this number would be to it. In fact, I offered, to give the recycling of Riverwood to him. That's another four hundred and forty-eight recycling of dollars. He says, no, I don't want, I can't handle that. I just said, well, you can't handle four hundred recycling, no, so I can handle four hundred garbage cans. He says, well, I don't want it.
Excuse me.
Yeah, Bob?
I did not say I could not handle it. I said, if you didn't pay for me to buy a recycling truck when we already have one.
And, sorry, you're not ready to customers here, boy, and when he said we do Riverwood, then we come back, and John came back and said, go with the southeast, which was five hundred eighty-seven customers, Greg went to West Side, and adults cars, and Loubers got the rest. Then we went back to another, we did not come to any agreement, May fifteenth, Loubers slammed his chair to the table, stormed out.
Right, okay.
Greg laughs, and Jeff, we laugh. Greg, Zoe came to see us and said, won't you give him thirty? Burger said, I'll give him some, won't you? He kept saying that. Greg came also finally to the agreement, so now we gave it, but he didn't give it. It's like, come on!
The day after that, we gave them.
So you weren't?
Well, we had an agreement today.
We weren't adding it until eight, since that evening.
You guys, did you have a meeting at all since the last one either?
We are, no.
No.
So.
Yeah, but there's some other stuff added into the contract, and I'm sure it's not for you guys.
When we were asked where we started, one of the things we asked for, to get this done.
Yeah, exactly.
We asked for a ten-year contract, and they agreed to give us a ten-year contract. That's what we were working from. If you go out playing the truck, it's gonna.
That's where we sat at the negotiation table when we started, was a ten-year contract with the.
That, that wasn't the whole council, don't make it sound like it was the whole, but it's.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah.
It wasn't the negotiation meeting.
Greg and myself met with the, the hollers, and our original agreement that we had brought back was going to be with, as Linda was saying, the split of the west side, the west side, southeast, and north. Um, and then that was at one can size, and then the council asked for more information, and we got the, the information from the public that said, no, we need two can sizes to, to really make this more, more fair to the, especially the lower end, so that was major, the major shift in the first negotiations, and since then, we've been working on negotiating with Lemires having the north, northern part with the Riverwood territory, and parts of River, you know, west that at one point all of the U K part and the other two to be similar to what they have today.
Okay, so really, the only discrepancy is the ten-year contract, which it sounds like we've already promised them.
No, no, slow down with that promise. The way that we have us at the table discussing that, and at that same meeting, Lemires, we're gonna get the southeast. So we can't pick and choose which things we wanna hold to, while we agreed to, there was other things agreed to.
And so it's all changed.
When we sat there too, also, though, you gotta remember, we agreed to southeast, and they were adamant on Riverwood, but with the five hundred that you down there, and they didn't care, when they sat there, they'd rather have Riverwood than have the four hundred and twenty-four than to have the five hundred on the southeast side.
Somebody at that table, say, no, I'm not gonna give up Riverwood, so that's why we're chasing our tail continually.
No way all of us are gonna understand this whole thing because we did all it can, all of.
Right, you saw he said, she said.
Uh, what I'm seeing is, what we discussed last time, we said, it's gotta come back to us tonight. We have to make a decision. We need to come up with what we feel is the best here, say, this is what we're in favor of, you guys take it or leave it, you know, that's all we can do. Otherwise, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm listening to Bobby, I'm listening to Greg, I'm listening to Misky move roots and that, it's kind of like a, it's like you said, she said, she said. And that isn't gonna solve anything tonight. We have to come up with a decision tonight, offer it, say, this is what we're in favor. Offer it, say, this is what we're in favor of, and then let them do whatever, you know?
There was a contract offered, two accepted one day. So throw it off?
Contract was offered through, say, so yours, Greg's, and John's.
The council, or the city manager that we give direction to? To set out the dollars, to.
As a council, we still have to vote on that.
Exactly.
I'm not in favor of, say, tonight we proposed a five-year contract, everything that was laid out, that they agree with, everything else. I'm in favor of proposing that, and that's what I'm in favor of. Yeah, I'm gonna vote that way, and if there's a majority, then somebody has to change their mind over there, if it goes to a ten-year, the same thing will have to happen. So, it's, it's more in our hands now, what are we gonna do? Versus what they're gonna do at this point.
Right.
Not really, 'cause if we don't have an agreement with them, we can propose whatever we want, we still ain't got an agreement.
Then we have to go to the next stage, like we said, we said tonight was the night.
That's right, we did.
Oh, I think we have, I mean, it's dragging every month, it's just on and on and on and on and on, I said that at the.
They're so sick of this, they think they have something in place, and all of a sudden it says it all fell through. You know, it's just like watching Congress, you know? We're still sitting up in here about all that stuff, and it's irritating. And the city, the community members, they're tired of it.
Well, I think the residents are just as upset as we are. Really, you talk to a lot of them, when are you gonna get done, how long's it take you people to drag on with the garbage contract that we started a year ago in April? Ridiculous.
We got the facts here, let's put the proposal out there, what we're in favor of, go from there.
Well, I had hoped that we could come to an agreement amongst the three, so that they wouldn't be accepting of it, and we don't hope that. So we could get that done, and then bring it to the council, so we're not picking parts of what each person wants, or which each hauler expects, and, uh, you know, that we've, John's worked hard at that, Jeremy and I have worked hard at it, and we just haven't been able to. There's always one little thing, uh, okay, well, we'll take it all, accept this, we'll take it all, accept this. And I'm not blaming any of them, it's just that we can't come to consensus, and I don't know how we will. And this is what it comes to, that it's gonna be in our hands to try to create something, and I don't think that's necessarily the best idea. Because like Jeremy said, we can come up with what we want, and if we don't have people signing it, then what do we do then? If we have one hauler, uh, then, I don't know.
I mean, is it five or nothing, or five, or ten or nothing, or is there an opportunity, middle ground between the two?
So the contract now states ten.
Contract proposal.
And you three have worked real hard to put this contract together, right? So maybe what we should do is say, I don't really think ten is a great idea, I'd rather see five, but these three have worked so hard on it, that I'm gonna take their recommendation, because I trust them, and I know that they know what they're doing. Is that something we can do?
I don't like the sound of ten-year just on the surface, but if we went in and that's how the rates are calculated, it's kinda
Right.
difficult to go backwards on.
Right, because I wasn't there. But, you know, these three have worked real hard on putting this contract together, I don't like a ten-year contract, but I wanna get this done, and if it means that I have to sign a, you know, a vote on that, then it's.
We have one member that.
Then we have to catch, but she said, that's how it is, I'll accept it. I heard her say that, I was gonna go. You know, I don't, I don't think ten, I think ten years is too much, but if that's what it's gonna take, and if we have to compromise somewhat, then.
You give a ten-year contract, are we gonna have some kind of stipulation in there? These people just run wild for ten years, I mean, what, how do we, do they have to report in every couple of years, or what is the deal on this? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
It's in their contract.
It's in the contract that they have, we negotiate the, the rates, and there's things that we can be.
You think you'd be worried about other ones running, running rogue?
Every year.
Every year? So we renegotiate the rates.
Originally, we had three-year lock-in, and then changed the cart size.
How about seven years and a three-year roll, I'm a negotiating kinda guy.
I'm, I'm like, it's solved with that, especially when they said they had a, they had to buy the equipment to handle carts.
And that was our concern, and I, I, you know, I feel for them, 'cause if you're gonna make that investment, you know, is that our responsibility? No, but you expect people to be able to lift those, uh, carts?
I can get behind longer terms, because it is a, it is a major upfront expense, at the opportunity to save in operating costs to, in order to keep that price, to get to that price where we're, where we're at, it was, I mean, if, if you go to where we first, first went, and then had a short-term contract, it would be at twenty dollars a month for everybody, and that's just not where we wanted to be, and so extending the length to stretch out the cost, make those capital improvements, in order to keep the operating cost down, was the, was the trade-off that we're making in the negotiations, that was, that's, that's where a lot of this came from. I mean, it turns back.
So, it goes to a vote, and somebody needs to get up here and say what, what it should be, if they will hold on.
And we'll make a motion at the meeting, right?
Yeah.
And that did agenda on, so that you.
Well, we got, two of that have signed.
They decided to agree to the, to a ten-year deal with the split of the territories.
Okay. So we're short one, what's, what's the hangup?
Well, well, I'm just talking to contract, they, uh,
like, you take it out of the, it's in the, I added it to the, the piece, and, uh.
What exactly are you gonna take out, and you put in?
The, the contractors can't work in other territories.
At all, ever?
That, that wasn't the intent, what the, the message was.
That's how, that's.
That's, that's what it was, it was understood. Take that piece out.
Can you guys find that? Jim?
Everything else, well, Frank, you get him, all of them, you want that. And Jeremy, and most of them, they're in our care. Give us that, or give us so he's back, you changed it so many times.
Yeah, they agreed, but it was I give, the Burger gives. I'm the only one that give.
So John, when you reorganized, did some come off in Luberts, I mean, off River, to go to Luberts on the first go-around?
Yes, of the first.
Those twenty something, or whatever it was, around the other side.
We took the Broadway piece, was, was where we first started, and then I, I saw that the numbers still were about forty or fifty off, from Luberts to, to Burger. And looked to add, and take out another twenty-four, and the, you know, trying to not pick and choose where things were, to make, make a pretty wide divide. I had another twenty-four, and then they were within, you know, ten or fifteen from where they were at that point, so, um, at, you know, as far as we were at when we were, we were going to the meeting, when the, granted, the numbers weren't perfect, because we had some added active accounts, and there was some, I needed to clean up the numbers a little bit, but, uh, and it, they ended up at pretty close, and that's when, and then taking away the thirty-five from, uh, the Riverview area, it was, that's where you get to the four fifty-eight.
So in order for you to be happy, Bergard's gotta give thirty-five of his customers to Luberts, in order for you to sign your contract.
Twenty, twenty-five is what.
We were each supposed to give thirty, but great, he kept saying, come on, come on, give thirty, and we're done, come on, give thirty. So great, so he came out, finding, he gave that little piece that he gave, and he didn't. It's like, come on! So give us ours back, he gave us, and we're done. We'll sign ours too. We already did sign one, we gave it to John on technical.
You think? You haven't noticed that? We got fifteen seconds, guys.
And once again, I go back to who owns these people. That's the, that's the trick question, that's all about. So.
So.
For the number results, we can see them. Then let's hold on to this thing.
I'll have them up on, on the screen.
Numbers are different every month?
Things get like it every time, you see them, they're different.
Well, so, so, we're happy with this. They're getting more than they asked for, so. They have room to grow on the Riverwood, I have room to grow beyond Monmouth. Maybe it's kinda been, since that area, I have room to grow, but they're gonna add, how to get homes. So that's why I kinda need to to give, let him keep them for the next customers, because I know couples and building out there, and I'm going out there by Monmouth, too. That was my reasoning, but I'm giving him that. Just, if I miss growth, and we sell some property, probably, yeah, first one, I guess, that area.
That's not residential?
Thank you, well, we, uh.
Hello?
Thank you.
I can run a free story about this. Have a good day at practice.
But it won't be a big tour, yeah. Well, we've got a bunch of people here for that, next off, we can discuss that, and, you know, we can play this game all night, it's like watching a tennis match.
Yeah.
I might be suggesting if those guys would just go out into another room and, and mediator, right? And sit out there and just say, okay, so what this does tonight, you three come up with your decision. Before we bring it back up in our.
Like only one snap.
It's so ridiculous to hold us, you know, hostage over a situation like that.
So the, the numbers in yellow, it's the may active accounts, as the contract went up. Lemires are at four fifty-eight, uh, Burger twelve oh one, Luberts eleven sixty-three. If we go back to where we were, kinda leaving that meeting, it would've been Lemires at four ninety-one, Burger at eleven seventy-six, and how Trump had eleven fifty-five. That's where, that, that May fifteenth meeting, where we're, where we're talking about if, if, prior to Lemire giving up half of, half of Riverwood. So if you take the Riverwood, or Riverview piece, you change that. Eleven eighty-eight, eleven seventy-six, back to four fifty-eight. No, the contract today is this. Contract that needs to be signed.
Either way, it doesn't benefit Lemire any, it's just swapping a few people, I don't know, I don't know if you guys are happy the way it is already. So that's not an issue, I guess the only issue is if we're going to a ten or five-year contract.
Or some, some difference in, in between it, ten, five, three, seven, over eight. Split the difference.
Okay. Well, if we ask them to price that ten. I guess I'm okay on ten. We should've caught that. Figure it all in April, right?
Yeah, no, but there's a lot of other things tied to that, you know, and we have this whole thing that we tied together, so you can't just take out one piece and fix that one.
I'm taking out the contract, that is added.
Yeah.
Take one out, and come home, and get it rebuilt.
So in other words, your recommendation is over a ten-year contract.
Well, I, I.
He sent the contracts out to him, that's obviously what his recommendation is.
I'm based on the.
Everything's based on that, or else you have to adjust the whole formula.
We're, we're making, we made a lot, we made a lot of expectations in terms of the monthly, with the monthly cost. Based on the ten-year contract, there was a lot of conversation with the ten-year contract.
But once again, it was negotiations, and like Leif said, the common person on the street's gonna say, okay, you got three haulers, why don't you split it three ways? Uh, so there's concessions with somebody getting less, and there's gotta be concessions both ways, that's all, that's what it's all revolves around, so, uh, nobody's right, and it's up to us to vote what we want, no matter what the recommendation is, like the circus was, we didn't have a recommendation on the circus.
Can I get something? No, it does not. Hey, can I, it's about ten as a school's project.
I can tell you, I figured that, I've done the daycare, and that's the one, you're collecting. Wrong, what that's worth.
General Waste Management.
Who does the city use for their gar, or who does the school use for their garbage? Have them for donation.
Well, Greg, what we got into was, okay, should they pick up their own territory on daycare, or should they split it by thirds? If they're not splitting the money by thirds all year, why would they split it by thirds as a donation?
And that's what we did this year, split it by the territory, and I got pulled back to get this year because of that.
From what I understood, there was two haulers that were in favor of that, so.
I guess with a couple of daycareing, if this goes forward, we should discuss how it works, and that's what I.
So where did daycareing all of a sudden become the city's responsibility to pick it up? Is that not a school organization?
I think it was.
Projectly?
The daycareing's been.
So. It's not a city organized deal, is it?
No.
We just sponsor donations?
For time and taxpayer dollars to.
Like John said, it, it benefits us to clean up this thing again. What we had talked about, Greg, is to pull that out of negotiations, if that was a sticking point. It's not that we can't negotiate that, next week for a year, uh, that, for a ten-year contract, but to try to tie it in, you know, it's like tying that to a, a union negotiation, and saying, okay, this little thing.
I know from the last three years that I've been negotiating with the three haulers, that we were trying to get for garbage, it's been a game to get those three to say, yes, we'll pick up the day.
And why is that? 'Cause it's on the day when they pick garbage, is right? So they got a full, full day of work ready to go on above and beyond it, so, and the daycareing don't wanna switch? Wednesday very well, yeah. So maybe something to look at this will start again, too? Or look for alternative way to haul it?
Well, I mean, we can, we can get other options.
Multi-million dollar contract, and we're holding up with the daycareing to, something that we ain't saying really our jurisdiction, as far as I'm concerned. Anything else? Turn on, we'll adjourn to the meeting in a few minutes.